I would like to call the city council meeting for June 13th, 2018 to order. At this time, we're going to have our normal moment of silence. I had, last week, I was, had an opportunity to go to a national security seminar in Pennsylvania for the, all the armed services and foreign service people. And I'll tell you, after that discussion, their, that group is more focused on peace, more focused on critical thinking, the morality of what they do, and finding ways to maintain peace. And I think that's very heartening for all of us, knowing that they're there to defend us when we need them, but on the same point, they want to find ways to prevent the need for war. So, I was very encouraged by that, and I think all of us as citizens should be, and our relationship, the importance of our relationship with the Rock Island Arsenal, not only the many Davenport citizens who work there, but also the men and women who not only work there, but also will put themselves in harm's way to defend the opportunity diplomacy, information, then use potential military, but also economic, to create situations where we don't need war. With all that in mind, let's take, stop for a moment of silence. Thank you all very much. Alderman McGinnis, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance? Thank you very much. And Jackie, would you please call the roll?
Ambrose, Condon.
Here.
Rossen.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Matson.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Clul.
Here.
Tompkins.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Nine present, your honor.
Thank you very much. And again, I want to, well, wish you a good evening, and as we begin this meeting of our city council, I would like to welcome all those in attendance, and those who are viewing the meeting on television or on the internet. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, and please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region by way of our TV broadcast. We really are happy that you're participating in your city government, and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence your cellphones and other electronic handhelds devices, as they can be disruptive and interfere with the audio system here in the chamber. I would welcome you to understand that you will have an opportunity to discuss city business under the city council portion, under public with business, and at the end of the meeting, which will occur, and also during any discussion periods that we may have. When addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself, and speak to the council as a body, and not to any single member. We will ask that you limit your remarks to no more than five minutes, and I ask that everyone observe, and I know you all will, the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. So, thank you again for being here. Will an Alderman move approval of the minutes of the city council meeting for May 23rd?
Seven.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. Those who approved, is there a city administrator update this evening?
Nothing this evening, your honor.
Thank you very much. Will an Alderman move approval of the report of the committee of the whole for June 6th, 2018?
(inaudible).
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. That is approved. And let me find my other material here that I have. We have a couple of proclamations this evening. Oh, here they are. We have a couple of proclamations this evening. First, I think we're going to have, let me see here, there we go. Alderman Dickman is going to read the proclamation on bonus fund giving week. Alderman Dickman.
Thank you, your honor. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the John Deere Classic Golf Tournament has been a community event for 48 years with philanthropy as its primary goal, and whereas the Birdies for Charity Program has been existent, in existence for 25 years, and helps raise donations for more than 500 area charities, and whereas the charitable giving of the Birdies for Charity Program to date has reached nearly 100 million to local, nonprofit organizations, and whereas the direct contributions to the John Deere Classic Bonus Fund are matched dollar for dollar by the John Deere Foundation, allowing the Classic to give each participating Birdies for Charity organization an additional donation each year. Now, therefore, we, Mayor Frank Klipsch and the Davenport City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of June 17th through 23rd, 2018, as Bonus Fund Giving Week in the city of Davenport, and urge all citizens to participate by giving to the John Deere Classic Bonus Fund to enhance an already very successful campaign in our community dated this 13th day of June 2018. I move the proclamation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. And I think Claire Peterson, attorney of the tournament director, will come up and accept the proclamation.
(inaudible)
Thank you, Claire. This is great. For all your work and all the support that John Deere does for the entire community. I think we're going to get a picture right now. My first proclamation is, I'm all over. See ya.
(applause)
That sport coat looks awesome. But, we've got a tee shirt that we're going to start introducing this week. Golf is hard, but we make giving easy. And it gives you a chip in hashtag there, and a chance to do what the proclamation just described, and that's give money to the bonus fund.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Your pleasure.
If you want to wear that for the rest of the meeting, that'd be fun.
(laughing).
But, thank you.
And it's a two F, you give what you're giving.
Well, you know, you want to err on that side. Anyway, I will not spend a whole lot of time. We really appreciate the proclamation and the recognition for what we've been doing, and it's really what we've all been doing for 48 years. This event is most recognized as an athletic contest, but in reality, we're a foundation of 501(c)(3) ourselves, whose main mission is to give money to charity. The mechanism we use is something that we basically invented, the Birdies for Charity Program. So, I'm sure all of you there, and everyone in the room probably, is familiar with, with that. What people don't understand, I don't think, is that 100 cents of every dollar pledged and collected for those charities, 521 of them last year, gets delivered to those charities, which is a pretty great accomplishment, because John Deere pays the administrative fees. The other part of it is, we put on the event, and we have initiatives that fill what we call the bonus fund, and that's what we're talking about in the proclamation. That's the on top money that we give to each of those organizations, in addition to the 100 cents on the dollar. We've been able to, because of successful years, give a 10% bonus the last few years. Our promise is 5%, so that's not a bad return on, on anyone's investment. But, the community impact, we're really proud of. We know that everyone is engaged, but our messaging this year is just to make sure that everyone understands that we are a charity. $12.3 million last year was delivered to these 521 organizations, and about $1 million of that was the bonus fund. So, thank you very much. I really appreciate the recognition, and everything that you've already done, and will continue to do over the next 26 days, I think, before tournament week.
Thank you, Claire, very much, for all your support. This is great. Thank you.[516.62][516.62](applause) Our second proclamation this evening will be read by Alderman Reed Rossen, and will be recognized in the LGBT Pride Month. Alderman Rossen.
Thank you, your honor. Proclamation. Whereas equality, inclusion, respect, and safety for all persons is a core value of the city of Davenport, and whereas we know that communities succeed and achieve their best potential when forward-thinking individuals set their sights on the journey for a brighter tomorrow, and whereas the fight for dignity and equality for lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender people is reflected in the tireless dedication of advocates and allies who strive to forge a more inclusive society, and commit to bending the arc of our community and nation toward justice, and whereas they have spurred sweeping progress by changing hearts and minds, and by demanding equal treatment under our laws, from our courts, and in our politics, and whereas we are committed to the human rights provisions of our city codes and policies and the constitutions of the United States of America and the state of Iowa that protect civil liberties and provide equal protection under the law, and whereas the lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender communities contribute to the cultural, civic, and economic successes of the city of Davenport, and whereas we celebrate our community's diversity and welcome all residents who live here, regardless of their national origin or ancestry, race, color, religion, creed, sex, marital status, age, mental or physical disability, political affiliation, gender identity, familial status, sexual orientation, or financial and socioeconomic status. Now, therefore, we, Frank Klipsch, mayor, and the city of, the city council of Davenport, Iowa, do hereby proclaim June 2018 as LGBT Pride Month in the city of Davenport, and reaffirm our community's shared values of compassion, inclusion, respect, and dignity, and our commitment to building an environment and a community in which everyone is valued, and everyone has the opportunity to thrive, and we encourage the citizens of Davenport and the greater Quad Cities to likewise affirm these values of inclusion. Dated this 13th day of June 2018, and I move this proclamation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. I think we're Rich Hendricks from the Quad City Metropolitan Church is going to come up.
I also have Michelle Royal and Andrew Arnold from the Quad City Pride Board.
I gratefully receive this proclamation on behalf of QC Pride and the Greater Quad Cities LGBTQ community. Thank you to Davenport, Mayor Klipsch, the city council, for actively promoting Davenport as a welcoming and inclusive community. I'm proud to call Davenport my home, and I have never regretted coming back here to my hometown over 13 years ago, after being away for over 30 years. We are grateful for being able to host a very successful Pride Week, and the first ever Quad Cities Unity Pride Parade. It was an unqualified success. We had many events and lots of participants, and we just very much appreciate all of the businesses and folks who came out to support us. Most folks understand that love is love, and that there are infinite expressions of who we are as sexual beings and as human beings. Most folks understand that a healthy, vibrant community needs to attract and be welcoming to all kinds of people. Maya Angelou said, "Equal rights, fair play, and justice are all like the air. We all have it, or none of us have it," and that is the truth of it. Our community is a better and more loving community when we learn to respect each other and include everyone. President Obama said, "When all Americans are treated equal, no matter who they are or whom they love, we are all more free." We in the LGBTQ community stand united against all forms of hate and bigotry. Thank you for publicly proclaiming that you too are standing on the side of love and freedom.[783.73][783.73](applause)
Thank you very much. We're next going to do one presentation this evening. We're going to do the recognition for our local Special Olympics team and the Scott County Masters. I'm going to come around and do the presentation, and give out the certificates at the podium up there. Adam's anxious.
Well, again, we have, we get to see Adam quite a bit, and we're delighted that you're here on a regular basis. He's talked about all of you, and we're delighted to have a chance to get to meet you all. We want to talk a little bit about the coaches, and maybe you could come on up when I call your names. Connie Allen and Kelly Tusher, is that right? Come on up if you're here.[818.00][818.00](applause) The team began in the early 1990s as Scott County youth, but there are some athletes that have stayed on into adulthood, prompting the name change to Scott County Masters. Adam's got it marked straight here. Yeah, I got that. The team is active in year-round sporting events, including bowling, track and field, volleyball, ice skating, including both figure and speed skating, snow shoeing, powerlifting, tennis, bicycling, and softball. So, we're really excited to have all of you here. Congratulations. We're going to ask, if you would, to come on up, and one at a time, I'll make a presentation. You're going to do individual shots for this? You want to do?
I can do it both ways.
Let's do it both ways. Let's do it both ways, I think. Our first is Mindy Anderson. Come on up, Mindy. Congratulations. Come right on over here. Give you your certificate. Here we go. Let's look up that way to our photographer. Take a picture. There you go. Congratulations. And maybe, if you would, why don't you come around on that side and wait over there, and we'll have each person do that. Coaches, you can go over there, too, if you want. And secondly, Thomas, stay here, and then we'll take a group photo. So, just kind of gather.
Just come up here.[879.12][879.12](applause)
You're very welcome. Congratulations, Thomas. You want to go head around over there? Here you go. Take your, take your certificate. There you go. Congratulations. Charlotte Cargill.[888.12][888.12](applause) She's officially first. And let me give you your certificate, and congratulations. See all that hardware she's wearing, too? Congratulations. You want to head around there with the rest of them? Sure, that'd be great. Marissa Clement.[896.12][896.12](applause) She's not here. We'll make sure she gets that. Arianna Ellingsworth. Come on, Arianna.[902.12][902.12](applause) Congratulations. Let's get a picture. Congratulations. You want to head over there with the rest of the folks? Jason Hawkeus.[908.12][908.12](applause) We got the first one here. Adam McWilliams.[911.12][911.12](applause) Nicole Skelly.
She's on, she's on.
Gabe VC.
She's not here either.
Well, Adam, come on back up here a minute. Adam, not only his participation, was also voted the 2018 Athlete of the Year. So, congratulations. We have outstanding male athlete of the year. We'll hold this one up, so you get two plaques, and all your hardware here. I'll actually put these on you, I think. That'd be kind of cool.
Yeah.
I got a unanimous support for doing that. (laughing) So, there is the first one. Congratulations. And the second one? There it is. It's in my hand. There you go. Definitely third. And let's hold the plaque and the certificate. Why don't you hold the plaque, and I'll hand the certificate, and we'll get some pictures over there.[959.12][959.12](applause) Laura's not here. Okay. The other one, Laura.
(inaudible).
Well, have her come down. I'll, I'll give it to her in my office, if you want, sometime. You can do that. We'll be happy to do that. So, thank you all very much. Let's go around, and maybe our, if you would back up, our council will get a picture of all of you with the council.
And I'm going to run around there in the middle. Do you want me right to by you?
All right. (laughing) Great. Good job.
(applause)
Frank, I do have something for you.
Okay. Thank you. Actually, I have two things.
Okay.
This is a Special Olympics poster that I had myself and all the teammates personally signed.
Cool. Thank you. We'll put that upstairs in the office for everybody to see. Great. Congratulations. Thank you.
And then I have, one more thing, if I could have our new fire chief come up here.
Thank you.
As some of you may know, I can do this while being emotional.
That's okay.
As many of you have known, we lost, you know, a very good firefighter, Mike Hayman, and I, and Jody King, one of my gold medals to his family, and he's on it.
All right. Thank you very much.[1034.12][1034.12](applause) On behalf of the firefighter in the Hayman family, thank you very much. I appreciate everything Adam's done, and he's been a part of our family for quite a while, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Carlson. That's great. Thank you all. And Adam, don't forget your hardware.[1042.12][1042.12](applause) Thank you all very much. We're glad you're here. You can stay, obviously, as long as you'd like. If some of you have to leave, this might be a time, if you want to leave now or not, we please would love to have you as long as you'd like to stay. Some of you have to go? Okay.
We're out of here.
Bye. Thank you.
(inaudible).
Alderman Condon, you can't go. Alderman Condon can't leave. No.
You've got to be specific.
Yes, true. That's very good. Okay, we're going to move on to our next petitions and communication from council members and myself. Alderman Dickman, would you like to start that discussion, please?
Thank you, your honor. We, from the community engagement, we are very fortunate that we have lots of community engagement, so much so that the mayor's summit tomorrow, the evening session, I believe, has filled up.
Both of them have.
Both, okay, both of them have now filled up. So, hopefully, we will be able to come up with something else. We don't want to lose that input that everyone in the community is, is so eager to participate. So, that's, that's wonderful. The bad news is that we did fill up, but the good news is that I am still having my ward meeting tomorrow. So, if you are interested in coming to learn about regional mental health, we will be at Fairmont Library at 6:00 PM, and it is open to everyone, and I really am excited to hear that so many people wanted to be engaged, and I hope that that will sustain itself. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dickman. Anybody else seeing none? I just want to make a couple of things. One, about, the summit is not, this is not the end tomorrow. This is the beginning. We anticipate, if any of you in the community have a group in your neighborhood who wants to get involved, this is your summit. This isn't, this isn't about me. It's not about the police chief. It's not about the city alone. It's about us as a community coming together. So, we'd like to hear your input, so please let us know. We anticipate, over the next month, doing maybe 20 to 30 different sessions in the neighborhoods, and wherever you want us to be, to get feedback. We have close to 240 for tomorrow, but simultaneously, there are events going on in the community. I was just, the chief and I were just at an event this afternoon with a variety of entities from victims, law enforcement, service providers, minority groups, juvenile court services, schools, and those are going over the next two days as well. So, the idea is to get all the, everybody's voice being heard, become part of a long-term solution, and it's more, like we said, a youth community action summit is what we're focusing on. So, we want to mention that. The other bit of good news, if you haven't seen, the new Adler Marquis was just officially dedicated yesterday. I had the opportunity, just so happened to be in downtown Friday, Saturday, and Sunday evenings, and there was just so much activity going on. It was great seeing the sidewalks full of people, either living downtown and going to events downtown, so, and that was just another thing that kind of made that big Broadway feel almost downtown, is that marquee was being lit. So, thanks to all of that, and I think we're, I don't see any other comments. We'll move on to our individual items on our, on the discussion agenda. And again, for all those, last week, at the committee of the whole, items were brought up. If people thought they needed a little more discussion, they put them on the discussion agenda, which these items are, and we'll be discussing them a little bit more, at least having an opportunity to do that this evening. Our first item on the, on the discussion agenda is a second consideration. Ordinance for case number zero, I mean, ORD 18-01, amending title 17.41 of the Davenport Municipal Code entitled zoning. Hcod, Hideaway Corridor Overlay District, and Ecod, Elmore Corners Overlay District, by creating an Elmore Corners Overlay District and design standards. This is in the sixth ward, as you well know. Is there any public with comments this evening?
Candy Pasternak again, with Pasternak Law Firm, here on behalf of THF, but also in support of the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation to this council, which would support an Elmore Corners Overlay District that excludes the THF parcel. I really don't want to wear out my welcome and repeat what I've said in the past, but I think it's important to realize that there are significant hardships that would be imposed on the developer, a developer who's invested $43 million plus in a development based on the zoning that existed at the time that it acquired the property, and put the property in, and put the development in, and continued to develop the property, even recently with the latest additions that we're all familiar with, the Dix, the Field and Stream, moving the Hobby Lobby from Bettendorf to Davenport, but on the same Elmore Street. One of the things that came up in the committee of the whole meeting that I would like to address today deals with the hardship that would be imposed on THF if council does not follow P&amp;Z's recommendation. Staff candidly reported to this council that there are additional restrictions, burdens, design standards requirements, things that do not exist in the current zoning that THF has relied upon in its development of this parcel. And I think it was Alderwoman Tompkins that asked the question that if council decides to change the recommendation and, and do something different than what P&amp;Z is recommending, wouldn't there be the opportunity to obtain a variance on the part of THF in future developments if the council would go against what P&amp;Z has recommended? And that in and of itself creates the hardship that we would not have to have if you follow P&amp;Z's recommendation. And in obtaining a variance, all of you probably already know this, but it can't be a hardship of our own making. So, if you incorporate THF parcel and go against the P&amp;Z recommendation, you add the THF parcel back in, then you've created the hardship that we're going to have to come to you about further variances if developments proceed based on the zoning that exists at the time we've invested $43 million. So, I think that that's something that needs to be considered significantly by this council before they decide to do anything other than support the P&amp;Z recommendation. You still have the ability to create your Elmore Corners Overlay District. You still have a logical demarcation with the division at 59th Street, and there's no reason that P&amp;Z's recommendation should not be followed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Seeing no one, will an Alderman move the second consideration of this ordinance?
So, move.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion by any of the Aldermen? Alderman Clul.
I just wanted to say, Attorney Pasternak, you have not worn out your welcome every time you've spoken articulately on behalf of THF, and I appreciate it. You obviously reflected on the comments that came up during the committee of the whole, and that helps the council in terms of making their final decision, so I do appreciate your presence.
Thank you, Alderman Clul. Alderman Matson.
Thank you, your honor. Just want to clarify, as I usually do, this does not clude PHF in this, what we're voting for, so they're exempted. Correct. Thank you.
Okay. Any other...
evenings, and there was just so much activity going on. It was great seeing the sidewalks full of people either living downtown and going to events downtown. So, and that was just another thing that kind of made that big Broadway feel almost downtown is that Marquis was being lit. So, thanks to all of that, and I think we're, I don't see any other comments. We'll move on to our individual items on our, on the discussion agenda. And again, for all those, last week at the committee of the whole, items were brought up. If people thought they needed a little more discussion, they put them on the discussion agenda, which these items are, and we'll be discussing them a little bit more, at least having an opportunity to do that this evening. Our first item on the discussion agenda is a second consideration, ordinance for case number zero, I mean, ORD 18-01, amending title 17.41 of the Davenport Municipal Code entitled zoning, H-C-O-D, Hideaway Corridor Overlay District, and E-C-O-D, Elmore Corners Overlay District by creating an Elmore Corners Overlay District and design standards. This is in the sixth ward, as you well know. Is there any public with comments this evening?
Candy Pasternak again with Pasternak Law Firm, here on behalf of THF, but also in support of the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation to this council, which would support an Elmore Corners Overlay District that excludes the THF parcel. I really don't want to wear out my welcome and repeat what I've said in the past, but I think it's important to realize that there are significant hardships that would be imposed on the developer, a developer who's invested $43 million plus in a development based on the zoning that existed at the time that it acquired the property and put the property in and put the development in and continued to develop the property even recently with the latest additions that we're all familiar with, the Dix, the Field and Stream, moving the Hobby Lobby from Bettendorf to Davenport, but on the same Elmore Street. One of the things that came up in the committee of the whole meeting that I would like to address today deals with the hardship that would be imposed on THF if council does not follow P&amp;Z's recommendation. Staff candidly reported to this council that there are additional restrictions, burdens, design standards requirements, things that do not exist in the current zoning that THF has relied upon in its development of this parcel. And I think it was Alderwoman Tompkins that asked the question that if council decides to change the recommendation and do something different than what P&amp;Z is recommending, wouldn't there be the opportunity to obtain a variance on the part of THF in future developments if the council would go against what P&amp;Z has recommended? And that in and of itself creates the hardship that we would not have to have if you follow P&amp;Z's recommendation. And in obtaining a variance, all of you probably already know this, but it can't be a hardship of our own making. So if you incorporate THF parcel and go against the P&amp;Z recommendation, you add the THF parcel back in, then you've created the hardship that we're going to have to come to you about further variances if developments proceed based on the zoning that exists at the time we've invested $43 million. So I think that that's something that needs to be considered significantly by this council before they decide to do anything other than support the P&amp;Z recommendation. You still have the ability to create your Elmore Corners Overlay District. You still have a logical demarcation with the division at 59th Street, and there's no reason that P&amp;Z's recommendation should not be followed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Seeing no one, will an alderman move the second consideration of this ordinance? It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion by any of the aldermen? Alderman Clul.
I just wanted to say, Attorney Pasternak, you have not worn out your welcome every time you've spoken articulately on behalf of THF, and I appreciate it. You obviously reflected on the comments that came up during the committee of the whole, and that helps the council in terms of making their final decision. So I do appreciate your presence.
Thank you, Alderman Clul. Alderman Mattson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just want to clarify, as I usually do, this does not clude PHF in this, what we're voting for. So they're exempted. Correct. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Alderman Grip.
So, in the last committee of the whole, this is second consideration, I think we had an in-depth conversation during the first committee of the whole where we discussed bringing THF back into the overlay district during the third reading, which would be next week. I'm still in favor of that. I think with the investment that the city's made on North Elmore, I think that we need to make sure that the product that we get as far as design and look needs to be high finish and put together and look like it was planned. A number of reasons that we discussed earlier, but I look forward to that conversation in the next two weeks.
Thank you, Alderman Grip. Anyone else? Any comments? Seeing none, will the clerk call the roll on the second consideration of this ordinance?
Clul.
Yes.
Tompkins.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Rossen.
Yes.
Dickman.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Grip.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. That will move on to a third consideration. We have a first consideration of ordinance for case number REZ 18-04, request of Pheasant Creek Properties LLC to rezone 33.11 acres, more or less, of property located east of Jersey Meadows subdivision and north of East 53rd Street from A1 Agricultural District to R2 Low Density Residential District. Is there any public with comments?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Peter Malarkey. I'm a vice president of Advanced Homes and Pheasant Creek LLC. We're the petitioners before you this evening. First of all, I'd like to thank you for your time and letting us present our case here and have a discussion with you. You heard last week from my colleague, Adam Seitz, in regards to this development. So there were a few other points we wanted to make as the developer of the subdivision, and I hope to bring those before you today and answer any questions you may have or any concerns you may have with our subdivision. The first thing I would want to talk about this evening are the three access points that we have granted into our property through 58th, 59th, and Meadows Place Court. Our site plan utilizes these three access points that were provided to us at the time we purchased this property. The developer for Jersey Meadows, with the support of the City of Davenport planning, as well as this council, envisioned that these access points would be the primary entrance for the subdivision. They also created two exits onto Jersey Ridge at that time, knowing full well that the long-range plan envisioned residential going into this area and, as well as, excuse me, part of this comprehensive plan, that additional residential development would occur on the ground we purchased located to the east of Jersey Meadows. Had the City of Davenport not wanted the additional residential development behind Jersey Meadows, they would have required cul-de-sacs instead of subdoubt streets and access to our neighboring property, and the comprehensive plan for the city would not have included residential on our piece. We also wanted to point out that connectivity to existing neighborhoods when developing a subdivision in different phases is very customary within the City of Davenport. For example, the Jersey Farms 10th Edition and the Forest Road Estates Edition are continuations of the original Jersey Farms subdivision located directly to the north of our property. Essentially, our property will be a continuation of Jersey Meadows going east. The arguments by the neighbors on Jersey Meadows, we feel, are based on a motion. The facts show that the City of Davenport has reviewed the traffic flow. There's accessibility of emergency vehicles and the garbage removal that the additional home sites would generate. All of these areas were approved by the city staff. The Planning and Zoning Commission and the city staff also recommended zoning approval on the condition that it does not connect to Elmore Avenue. We fully support no connection to Elmore Avenue from our subdivision. During Costco's rezoning of the property on 53rd Street, there was a discussion of creating a bridge from Elmore Avenue to the Costco property. That bridge was eliminated by this council on the basis that the bridge to Elmore was cost prohibitive. The recommendation by the council at that time to eliminate access to Elmore should carry forward in regards to this project on the same basis that the connection is cost prohibitive to both Advanced Homes, Pheasant Creek, and the City of Davenport. There's also a need within the community for builders to have lots, to be able to build on and create a further inventory of lots for builders. The neighborhood, this neighborhood will find a niche in this area to promote growth for both the school system, the tax basis, and the overall growth of residences within the City of Davenport. We are presently providing lot inventory for area builders in our subdivisions in West Davenport, and we envision doing the same in this subdivision in East Davenport. As this council is aware, home builders in Davenport are about to lose the Davenport Now rebate, which is set to expire on June 30th. That program was very helpful in the sale of new construction within the City of Davenport. We feel that creation of a brand-new subdivision in Eastern Davenport would help fill that void and allow builders to be able to create more residences within the City of Davenport. And finally, and I think most importantly, Advanced Homes is determined to be a good neighbor to the existing residences within Jersey Meadows. We've been building subdivisions and homes within the City of Davenport for over 75 years. We take great pride in what we do, and we're very proud of what we do. Take a look at any one of our current neighborhoods, Emi's View Estates, Greenfields, Forest Road Estates, Wyndham West, or Wyndham Hills. All of these subdivisions are professionally landscaped, they're well-maintained, and we take great pride in the craftsmanship and quality within these subdivisions. We will continue with that same quality and same pride within this neighborhood as well. Thank you for your consideration this evening and on this proposed rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public would like to speak?
Joel Moore. I live at 2723 Julie Lane Court. And myself and some neighbors have banded together to canvass the Jersey Meadows neighborhood to determine what people feel concerning the rezoning issue of Pheasant Creek Edition. We do support the construction of the new homes. What we're asking is, and is the majority of the neighbors there that I've talked to would like to see an access to Elmore Avenue for safety reasons, to keep our streets in good condition, and to improve traffic flow through our neighborhoods. So as of today, I just submitted additional signatures to the city clerk. Right now, we're at approximately 57% of the neighbors that live in Jersey Meadows wishes for an access to Elmore Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public?
Good evening. My name is Mike DeJulius. I live at 5808 Lorton Avenue. I want to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today. Last week, I spoke on a motion. This week, I did a lot of research yesterday, and I'm going to speak on facts. Facts that I hope that you check with your staff, because my word is one word, but your staff is ultimately your guys' knowledge to this addition. A connection to Elmore would require a bridge. We've already accomplished that. That bridge was estimated by staff, council, to be $1.5 million. As a civil engineer, I tried my best to do a life cycle cost analysis on this project. Although I'm not familiar with structural concrete as I am with flatwork concrete, I tried to do my best, and this is where I would ask you to ask your staff for a recommendation to see if my facts are correct. The life expectancy of a bridge is 50 to 100 years. In this case, let's use 75 as an average. The average cost of a bridge that I found was $2,000 per square meter. That puts this bridge at approximately 750 square meters. There are required inspection every two years at a cost of close to $1,000 every year. That's $37,500 over the life of this bridge. It is also recommended by the Federal Highway Administration to crack ceiling, deck ceiling, every three to five years. In addition to these costs, it is suggested that asphalt overlay and concrete patching be done every eight to 12 years. My estimation that these would cost the city nearly $750,000 in repairs over the life of this bridge. Add that to the replacement cost at the end of its life of 75 years, and you have now $30,000 a year that this council has to place to maintain and replace this bridge for the next 75 years. Past governments have not done this across the state of Iowa. That is why nearly 20% of Iowa's bridges are failing. Second in the nation in failing bridges is Iowa. As a taxpayer, I assume the city would not take on this financial burden unless it is absolutely necessary as a connection to Elmore. I know there is a current concern that adding 64 homes to the current subdivision would put the number of homes per exit to 110 approximately. I did some research on this as well. Jersey Farms and Forest Grove Estates combination directly to our north has 135 homes and one access point, with no additional access points in the future. Currently, Lakehurst and Walsh Point have 335 lots. That is 111 homes per access point. There's three entrances. There is additional 25 acres to develop within the Lakehurst and Walsh Point addition, adding more than that 111 per home if those are developed. Although this is a large number, it has currently worked for a very similar situation off on Utica Ridge and Jersey Ridge Road to the same addition that we are talking about. Furthermore, there is only one residential connection to Elmore, and that is 46th Street. 46th Street is an area that I grew up in. I grew up just north of Kimberley on Lorton Avenue, had many friends on 46th Street between Jersey Ridge and Eastern. These were nice, quiet residential roads when I grew up. Yes, there was some cut-through traffic, but it was minimal. Once the city connected 46th Street to Elmore, it has been nothing but problems. As you all know, the city has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in traffic calming techniques to try to eliminate the cut-through traffic. They have added islands and medians on 46th Street between Jersey Ridge and Eastern Avenue. They have added stop signs on 46th Street between Elmore and Jersey Ridge, and they have added a traffic signal at Jersey Ridge and Eastern, or Jersey Ridge and 46th Street. Although these techniques have helped, there is more traffic than when this area was developed. I don't believe it was due to the development, residential development, because the residential development was done by the time they connected to 46th Street, to Elmore. I believe this is the same opinion by the 20 people out of 27 people that live along 58th Street that do not want this access to Elmore Avenue. I believe strongly that 40, this 58th Street would become the new 46th Street through Davenport. Although there is a few more turns with growing traffic on 53rd Street, this will become the new 46th Street. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing no one else, do we have, is there any discussion? First, we're remove the first consideration of the ordinance, please? It's been moved and seconded. We don't have to do that yet. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion from the aldermen? And I see Alderman Mattson.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, questions for staff, and I don't know who to address, so you can tell whoever. So, so what we're voting on tonight does not include an entrance to Elmore, correct?
Correct.
Okay. If we were to change that, it would require an amendment, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so, does the connection to Elmore require a bridge if we were to do that?
Based on the engineering we did when we looked at Costco, the bridge, because of the Pheasant Creek, which is a major stormwater drainage area for the city and everything north, yes, it would require significant infrastructure.
Roger. So the bridge would cost over $1 million, easy?
We added a 1.3 to 1.5 when we looked at it, yeah.
And who would pay for that?
Usually the developer.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alderman Mattson. Alderman Grip, please.
So I just want to make a comment that Mr. DeJulius, right, he's speaking my language on these suburban developments that we do, and something that I've been trying to preach is that when you, when you gain infrastructure, I understand that the developer pays for the infrastructure, but once the development is in, we now have to maintain the infrastructure, and we have to replace the infrastructure. Many of the problems we have with the roads, not only in Davenport, but in the United States, is that we have done a really horrible job of planning for the second life cycle of infrastructure. And if you do the math on this development with 64 new homes and the property taxes and the percentage of the property taxes that actually come to the city, and then the percentage that actually go to infrastructure, you'll find out pretty quickly that that residential neighborhood may not pay for the roads in, within the neighborhood that service the houses, but it most certainly will not sustain that, that bridge or the culvert if you can get by with that. It would be a significant cost. And I think one thing the City of Davenport needs to do, if we're going to get back to par on infrastructure, is we need to start asking those questions upfront ahead of the development and try to make developments where we're going to be able to fund the second life cycle of that infrastructure. A few questions that I had asked last, last week at the meeting that I want to make sure everybody knows the answers to. So the first question was, what's allowable under the R2 use? Because there were some questions, I think, maybe about multi-residential. So, allowable uses under R2, single-family dwellings, parks, playgrounds, and community buildings owned by public agencies, public and parochial schools and private schools, church, synagogue, place of worship, golf course, country clubs, except miniature golf courses, home office, and then a few accessory uses. So that is, is what you can have there. I also asked about the traffic study, or not the traffic study, how you would determine how many, how many cars or homes would be able to easily get in and out of a neighborhood, or what's acceptable? Because I think the houses per entrance keeps getting brought up, and I haven't been able to find that as a metric anywhere. And basically, our traffic engineer responded that, oh, let me get to it. They assume so many cars per household, they count the households, and, where's the number? Okay, 220 units if the, if the subdivision is totally built out, 10 units per day. That's 2,200 vehicles per day, assuming 50% are in, in the, go out in the morning, and then 50% come back in the evening. And this seemed to be an acceptable use. He didn't think, based on those numbers, it would ever trigger the stop light at Jersey Ridge, but that would be something that would be continually monitored. And if the traffic either at Jersey Ridge or the entrance, either of the entrances to the subdivisions ever triggered it, at that point, you would get the traffic light. And then my last question was, in the comprehensive plan, what, what was this land zone? And it was zoned residential general. So R2 is definitely an acceptable use within that designation. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Grip. Anyone else with any questions? Seeing none, will the clerk call the roll for the first consideration of this ordinance?
Tompkins.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Rossen.
Yes.
Dickman.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Grip.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Clul.
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, and this will move to a second consideration. We next have a first consideration of ordinance for case number REZ 18-05, request of Pheasant Creek Properties LLC to rezone 7.41 acres, more or less, of property located west of Elmore Avenue and south of Pheasant Creek from A1 Agricultural District to PDD Plan Development District. Is there any public, are there any public with comments on this? Seeing none, will an alderman move first consideration of this ordinance? It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion for any of my colleagues? Seeing none, will, Jackie, would you please call the roll on this first consideration?
Dunn.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Rossen.
Yes.
Dickman.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Grip.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Clul.
Yes.
Tompkins.
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you. This ordinance will move to a second consideration. The next item is approval of all the items on the consent agenda. Is there a motion to that effect? It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Condon.
Yes.
Rossen.
Yes.
Sorry. Dickman.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Grip.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Clul.
Yes.
Tompkins.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. And for those who are maybe new to this process, all the other items that were on that list were discussed last week. If there were no questions or any other follow-up, then all of those were approved in one consent agenda vote. Then we will go second and third considerations of these ordinances that were in, as we turned about earlier, and some of the ones in this grouping that we've just approved. Are there any other ordinance resolutions or motions this evening? Seeing none, is there any public with business this evening? Yes, sir. Please identify yourself and your address and/or your ward. Come on up to the microphone, please, if you would, Ted.
My name's Ted Kettleson, Second Ward. And I need to get my notes. I'm sorry.
My name's Ted Kettleson, Second Ward. And I need to get my notes, I'm sorry. All right, my name's Ted Kettleson, Second Ward. Um, I just wanted to bring it to the council's attention, the need for what Uber calls the critical safety response line. They have, have it in all the major cities like, such as Dallas and Tampa, where, you know, where I've been. If you look at your past trips on, on the Uber app, you're able to contact phone support, you know, and talk to someone immediately. I believe it would help us out with public safety. For example, on 5:15 at 8:46, I took an Uber ride from here, and I was going home. What ended up happening, I saw the Uber driver just drive right past me and accepted the fare, and just kept going without me. I was like, okay, this is weird. You know, I thought it was a glitch. And she's, you know, she just kept going, and I was like, well, I'm gonna see how far she goes towards my house, and she's just keeps going by my house. And I'm just like, all right, this is really awkward. So, I hit cancel, and, you know, immediately tried to get into the Uber app, you know, to say what's going on. You know, there's no way to get ahold of them, but yet they are, you know, charging, charging my credit card, so I'm, I'm not really good at public speaking, so. So, I went to the police department, I was like, you know, hey, I'm a little concerned, you know, this, I feel this driver's trying to scam me, because, you know, she's going on the trip without me, and then they're gonna hit, hit my card. And they're like, well, you know, contact Uber. So, I was like, okay, yeah, that's a good idea, I think I'll do that. So, when I did it, to, you know, I was up till 3:00 AM, wondering, you know, why you guys hitting my card, you know, when I'm trying to, you know, resolve this. Eventually, they did. But I just, you know, after that, I just started looking at, you know, the past complaints with Uber, you know. You know, they have a Facebook page where you're able to look at the responses, you know, you can type to the page and people, and people respond. Most lately, people have been complaining about losing stuff in the cars and unable to get real-time help. So, imagine you're going to the airport, you leave your phone in the car, oh my God, I'm catching this flight, gotta go, oh man, I left my phone in there. How are you gonna get ahold of Uber? You can't. You have the, in Uber app, because you don't have your phone. From a public safety standpoint, let's say, thinking as a criminal, you know, hey, I want to rob someone, I want to rob someone's house. What better way to do that is then pick up an Uber app, oh, well, this guy's not home, and I know where he lives, you know. So, I just think it would benefit the city a lot more. We wouldn't have to worry about the police, you know, burdening the police with stuff that could be handled with Uber. Also lately, people have been getting Uber codes sent to them, and Uber's unable to address them immediately. I wanted to get a more robust, balanced, you know, from the driver's side. They have a Facebook group, drivers' group, but it's administered by just one person. So, you know, being able to get ahold of all the Uber drivers, you know, just asking them, you know, I asked the admin, I was like, can you let me in this group so I can ask Uber drivers what would you think about it? If, if city council were to, you know, maybe act on possibly forcing Uber to let us have that critical safety line that exists all over, you know, in all the major cities in the country, what would you guys think about that? And she was not very responsive. I was like, well, you know, you don't have to let me in the group, you know, just if you could ask the people. She's like, well, what do you want to ask? It's like, well, do you think Uber would do it? Do you think they will pull out of the community? Do you think this? Do you think that? And, and I had more questions, follow-up questions. You know, I do market research for a living, you know, so, you know, I just wanted a more robust topic. So, I was like, you know what, I'm just gonna go get my own data, I'm gonna get in an Uber, I'm just gonna take, you know, take a couple Uber rides and talk to people. One driver told me that the customer service line would be flooded by petty complaints and bogged down the systems, which I can understand, you know, if someone has a petty complaint, you charged me 20 cents more for my trip than what I was expecting. You know, I'm thinking more of, you know, like it is, the critical safety, hold on, what is it? Sorry. Oh, God, I'm horrible at public speaking, I'm sorry. The critical safety line, critical response safety line, you know, in it, that would be exactly that. You know, my, my driver's leaving, I'm not in the car, I left my wallet in the car. My driver robbed me. Is that it? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And again, this is a listening session for us, so we'll, we listen and don't respond at this point, public with, any other public with businesses
Hello, City Council. My name is Andrew Arnold. I proudly live in the Third Ward, and I'm an active citizen in Davenport. Tonight, I want to make a plea with the Davenport City Council to take a serious look at municipal broadband. Three years ago, after citizens came forward wanting municipal broadband, the city consulted the Magellan Advisors. They studied the city's needs and asserted that they were behind with providing citizens with adequate internet access. Schools, businesses, and homes all had lackluster connectivity that has put us behind other cities in Iowa, cities that weren't even providing a municipal broadband utility. Again, this was three years ago. Since that time, the number of people that use broadband has only grown. Almost everyone in our city has a connection to the internet. We use it to conduct business, keep up on current events, watch shows, movies, and educational programming, research papers, talk to loved ones, and even more. Davenport has the opportunity to turn our city into a more modern one, where tech-savvy companies and startups can thrive. We will attract younger people to live here and keep our youth that may leave for a, quote, "bigger" city. And set up a system for future infrastructure that can power our city. I would like to mention that the future of the internet and how it is used is currently in upheaval. This week, the rules for net neutrality were repealed, and the merger of Time Warner and AT&amp;T was approved. We have a chance to make sure that we have a hand in how our broadband is managed by accepting this proposal. Two days ago, Rock Island proposed their own municipal broadband utility, and they seem to be moving forward. We have been building a fiber network in Davenport for over 10 years, with over 100 miles already laid. This is a good time for the City of Davenport to reassess their position on having a municipal broadband utility. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public?
Good evening. My name's Dale Gilmore. I live in the Sixth Ward. I didn't really get a chance to write everything out, because I've been kind of busy, and I'm gonna talk about why I've been kind of busy. The Chevrolet Nova was a car built by Chevrolet from 1962 to 1979. It was a compact car designed to compete against the Falcon. This weekend, starting tomorrow, is the 11th Annual Heartland Nova Reunion. Now, this is a car show for Novas only, so the Mustangs, Corvettes, Corvaires, all you people, stay, you can come look, but, but, but you can't, you can't enter the show. This is the largest Nova-only show in the country, and it will be held at Jumers in Rock Island. Starts tomorrow, registration starts tomorrow, and then there'll be some trickle-in Friday after work. Saturday morning would be the best time if you wanted to come over and, and see a bunch of cars. Now, Friday, Friday night at 7 o'clock, there's a band out of Chicago. They're called the Neverly Brothers, not the Everly Brothers, the Neverly Brothers. Now, if, if your age begins with like a five or a six, you, you probably would really appreciate this, this band. They play everything from Elvis to The Beatles. It's free. It's supposed to be outside on the patio, but I think they're probably gonna move it in, inside. I, I'm kind of a Nova nut. I will have six of my cars there, so, you know, if you want to come over, pop's free, water's free, come on over. I can't say I'll buy you a water, because it's free, but, but, but come on over. Saturday morning would be the best time, you know, get there before it gets hot. I know it's supposed to be warm, but I'll be there. Just ask for me at the registration desk, and I'll help you with whatever I can, but hopefully I'll see some of you there. And don't forget the band Friday night. These guys are awesome. They're out of Chicago, it's not some garage band out of Eldridge, you know, it's, these guys are really, really, really good. So, come over and again, it's free. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Seven, 7:00 PM, 7:00 PM.
Thank you very much, Dale. Anybody else from the public? Seeing no one, is there any other reports of city officials? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor say aye. Pose same sign. Meeting adjourned.